Okay, we're going to begin our meeting this evening at 6:01 with the roll call.
Mayor Downing.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kidd.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Present.
Councilmember Collins.
Here.
Councilmember Gates.
I'm here.
Councilmember Meredith.
Here.
Councilmember Weddell.
Here.
Okay, I have not heard before ask a member of the council to offer the plejumblations, so therefore I will do it myself. Please join me in plejumblations. Give me a moment to get up.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to invite the city manager down. He came to join me at the dais, and we have a very special opportunity this evening to recognize some individuals who are with us on this week of political reform too.
Must have saw that on TV.
Well, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and start this. So tonight is a very special night, and I asked to have a few words before the mayor reads his proclamation and the council's proclamation. The reason for that is, as many of you know, I started as -- I started the fire department. And I was a fire chief for quite a few years, and I had the privilege of working with volunteers in the fire department. And I would have to say that, had it not been for the volunteers, the city would not have received the level of service that it enjoys today. The career staff, they do an incredible job. They stay really busy, but when there are simultaneous calls, when they have multiple calls going on at the same time, there isn't a staff to cover those calls, and they call back personnel, most of which are volunteers. And of course, the career staff also volunteers to come in on their own time also. If there's a really large event, and occasionally do have those really large events, again, the career staff is not very many on duty at one time. They rely very heavily on the volunteers, and all hours, day and night, they respond, and they respond routinely. And again, I got to know some very dedicated people over the years that I was proud to associate with. When I came into the city manager's office, I got to see a lot more of the volunteerism that occurred in the city. One of the things that I enjoyed was learning a lot more about how things happen, and there are many commissions and boards that serve the city that help us enjoy what we all have today. They range from the planning commission to the public safety advisory board to the ethics board I make, just go on and on about all the different boards and committees that serve the city. But the other thing that I really wanted to bring up tonight, and this is to recognize those who volunteer in the city of Port Angeles, that volunteer their time. I can tell you, the older I get, the things that become the most important to me change. In fact, I would say the most precious thing that I have today is my time. And people that volunteer and give up their time, give of their time, in really giving the city the most precious thing that anybody has, which is, again, their time dedicated to the city of Port Angeles. But I really learned, it's not the people that we normally think of when we recognize volunteers. And again, everybody on boards and commissions, all of you that routinely dedicate your time to the city, but what makes the city really unique, what really makes a city a giving city, is there are people that volunteer even outside of the boards and commissions. They may volunteer one or two days a year, helping pick up garbage, helping work on the dream playground, helping do a lot of the different things, and it's that collective volunteer effort that really makes us a unique community. And we have something very special that we would like to do before you read your proclamation, Mayor. So we'll do that right now, and then after that, you can read your proclamation. I'm just dying to do that.
And I would invite all the folks who are out there. There's spaces up here, so come on down. Make yourselves comfortable.
Before I read this proclamation, I would be terribly ridiculous, both on a personal note and on a professional note as well. I've been for 12 years or more in my life, served in the capacity of a volunteer coordinator for Catholic community services in Clough County, and seen on a daily basis what impact, what effect that volunteers have in other individuals' lives. And looking at the number of you in the audience, who I've seen, I've witnessed you in your daily lives volunteer through. This city is, has been richly blessed, even to this very moment, by the amount of social capital, the amount of willingness and thought of volunteers, many, many of which are filling seats here this evening. I don't know where our city would be. I don't know where we would -- I don't know where -- I've seen people's lives literally, their lives changed, their ability to stay at home, their ability to have things that they would here to port and been able to do themselves, or unable to do. But they, because of the willingness of the volunteer, their lives are made more safe. Our community is made better for their efforts. I take great pleasure, and it humbles me actually, to be able to read this proclamation on behalf of the city council and our city manager. So without further ado, let me read this proclamation. I will try to stay upright. If I look like a computer in a police cell, please rescue me. A proclamation in recognition of Volunteer Appreciation Week, April 3 through April 7, 2017. Whereas the city council and city staff appreciate and recognize the contributions made by volunteers to the city of Port Angeles and the community. Therefore, we dedicate this week, April 3 through April 7, to those who helped support the city through their selfless contributions. Our city relies heavily on those who serve, and we would like to say thank you to all our faithful volunteers. And whereas our volunteers work daily to improve our city, their dedication and their commitment to their work is truly genuine, and they are passionate about the success of our community. And whereas the city cannot solve its problems alone, it is through partnerships with volunteers, combined with their continued efforts, which allow the city to make a difference. Volunteers are a large part of what makes Port Angeles a great place to live, to work, and to play. And whereas through the dedication of volunteers, we're able to expand our possibilities and accomplish goals that might otherwise have been unattainable, while, all while together, working as a community. And whereas volunteers are true partners with the city, united in their efforts with sincere concern for the well-being of our community. Volunteers seek to make our city safer, stronger, and whereas our volunteers are vital to the sustainability of our city and are truly the heartbeat of our community, I now therefore Patrick Downing, Mayor, on behalf of the city council of Port Angeles, and Dan McKee, City Manager, on behalf of the staff of the city of Port Angeles, do hereby recognize our community volunteers by declaring April 3 through April 7, 2017, as Volunteer Appreciation Week. We thank you for your continued direction, selfless dedication, and tireless support. Now, I know some of you are in uniform, including Councilmember Dan Gates. I would invite each of you who have provided volunteer service, please stand up. I don't know of a better example, but I can say I've done it. Literally, every one of you has done it. And to those who didn't, I may attribute timidity to, and humility and modesty to the fact that I met you somewhere close to examining your daily lives, hit you too, to help someone in your daily path. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm reminded by a council member that we're going to take a short break, about 10 minutes until 6:28. We're punching cookies, or drinks, whatever is out there in the podium, so that we can gather and talk with each other and to enjoy a fellowship and friendship. We'll reassemble at 6:28. I think we're going to get started. We're missing two members. We're probably enjoying the chocolate cake out there. So we are at the 6:30 hour, which could be the time that our agenda and public notice is called for us to have a continuation of a public hearing on the Transportation Benefit District ordinance. So I think we're going to go there first. There are a couple of individuals who signed the -- to provide public comment, and we'll get to those individuals as soon as possible. I want to respect the council business and those of whom may be here this evening too, to provide further testimony or comments on the Transportation Benefit District ordinance in consideration, which is in our package of F1. Now, Craig is not here, is it? Catherine, are you correct tonight?
I believe so.
Okay, so let's turn -- so I'm going to have Catherine from the Public Works Department to begin our continuing conversation.
So, thank you. I guess first, I would say that a transportation benefit district is a special purpose district that allows the collection of new funding earmarked specifically for street maintenance and repair. Now, in the city of Port Angeles, we have about 120 miles of roads and another 40 miles of alleys, and we're not able to adequately fund maintenance out of the general fund because, of course, there we are competing with police and fire and parks and recreation. So this is not the first time that we brought this idea to council. In the month of March, we opened a public hearing. We had a first reading at the council meeting. Council had an executive session. Then today, we want to continue the public hearing, hopefully adopt the ordinance. This process flows in several steps. Once the ordinance is adopted, then the council, acting as the board of the newly formed Transportation Benefit District, would decide on the funding mechanism, and then that would go to a vote August 1st, a ballot measure on primary election. So that's the process that we're in the middle of right now. Up on the screen are a few of the key points relative to the Transportation Benefit District has already been discussed in more detail. So as you see, absolutely city infrastructure is a high priority for the council and for the public. And the most frequent complaint that we get is about the condition of our streets and our alleys. Our alleys are in especially poor condition. Our arterials are in better condition than the majority of the streets because we've been able to leverage some grant funds over time. So at least we've been able to keep that up. But something really must change. We must be able to improve the way that we're taking care of these streets because as they continue to deteriorate, they need to be completely replaced, and that's much more expensive than just maintaining the streets. So status quo funding for street infrastructure is not going to be a solution for the city of Port Angeles. This ordinance, adopting the ordinance, does not in itself establish a funding mechanism, just the framework for that funding mechanism. And then that would be established once the Transportation Benefit District is actually formed, then council would actually make that decision.
Before I continue the public hearing, just remember the council that would wish to ask any further questions of Catherine. Okay, well, that's a -- let me continue the public hearing and invite those of you in the audience who wish to offer commentary and comments on this matter, please take this opportunity and come to the podium and state your opinion in your address. Do you want to record?
John Rolston. Am I on?
No.
Do I have three minutes?
Three, Mike.
You can speak loudly and get more than three. I'm just caught up, John. So I can count on you. One, two, three.
John, and council, you're not limited to three minutes. This is a public hearing, not a public comment period.
Carrie? Are we on?
Exactly. What's happening there?
No, it wasn't on.
John Rolston, P.O. Box 898, Port Angeles. Thanks for, again, having a public hearing. And I certainly want to speak in support of the ballot measure, but I still have -- and certainly our streets, alleys, and sidewalks, et cetera, need some repair. I've read the RCW cited in the presentation that Craig gave last week, but I still have some answer -- or excuse me, some questions. And at some point, you're going to have to go before the public and ask for support of this ballot measure. One, is there a sunset provision? Doesn't seem to be addressed in the RCWs. Two, can the 2% sales tax be increased, decreased, or eliminated, and how often? And what's the process to get through that? In August of 2015, the state of Washington had a 7 cent per gallon increase in the gas tax. It's somewhat related to repairing our streets and sidewalks, et cetera. And I think it's important for the council who's promoting this, or the city that's promoting this, to explain to people where our gas, the lean taxes go in houses divvied out to cities and counties, et cetera, et cetera. Four, what if the feds come out with this massive infrastructure spending in PA lands a whole bunch of money? Is the 2% going to go away, eliminated, reduced? What's going to happen to the historical monies that have been taken from the general fund, the real estate excise tax, and the infrastructure, or internal transfers that have been put into the street fund? Those going to go away? If they are going to go away, where are they going to be placed? I realize that, you know, there's some money needed, but I think you need to address all of these things when you prepare yourself to answer questions from the public. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Can you hear me? Anybody else who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I will then now close this public hearing and invite the council members and staff to answer any questions who pass. Please.
I actually would like staff to comment on the public comments taken during the public hearing, please.
It will be more than likely a group effort, but I can address some of it. The one item that I do want to correct, and I believe John probably meant this, but it's a 0.2%, not a 2% tax. As far as the sunset period, I believe it's a 10-year sunset that if the city is going to continue with it after 10 years, it has to go back to the voters, or it just goes away at that point. Carrie, can you tell me what some of the other questions were? Go back to the --
Okay, the gas tax. I know that was addressed earlier during one of our presentations, but I don't have the numbers in front of me, and I doubt if the finance -- you know, our finance director has that in front of her right now too. But the one item that has been happening is that, and it's a statewide issue, is that the gas tax, even though there's been an increase in the gas tax,
the gas tax, even though there's been an increase in the gas tax, the city has not seen the same amount of increase in contributions from the state towards our roads and streets. And the reason for that, and I think a lot of people realize, that cars are becoming more efficient, and we actually have a lot of cars on the road now that don't use any fuel at all. And so part of the challenge is to keep up with the technology, keep up with efficiency, but still have adequate funding to deal with the roads and streets that everybody uses, regardless of how efficient or inefficient the vehicles are, and try to come up with a formula. I know the state's grappling with coming up with a method or formula that's fair to all that use the streets and roads in the state.
Here's a question about the process of changing the percent, if that's possible during the time period, or what's going to be fixed?
Okay, the, there's a statutory limitation on what the city council can adopt, and that is .2%. That is the max. I assume the council could, at any time, before the 10 years, reduce or eliminate that by council action, but they could not increase it beyond the .2%.
A question that I had that also tied into John's comment, in the event this passes, that we start accumulating the fees as planned, the current source of funding, which is obviously insufficient to keep fixing the roads, will that source still be putting money into the pot so that we would have the .2% plus the ongoing funds that we've been getting over the last few years?
Based on the previous presentations by the Public Works Department, and we went through our CFP and looked at all of the road issues that we have, we realized that even with the .2%, it's a fraction of what's really needed to bring the roads up to a good condition. Hopefully, what happens with the .2% is it's used to leverage grant funding that can be used to do some major repairs that we all would like to see. If we do, if we are fortunate enough where there's large capital projects that are approved through federal funding, and I know that's one of Trump's priorities, a lot of times, even with those projects, there are still some minor local matches, and that's where that money would be used to leverage, again, even larger projects. But again, if there was adequate funding coming in that actually started taking care of our needs, I would love to see that. I think that would be a problem that we would all love to have. We can always look at, and I think the public would expect us then, to reduce or eliminate that fee.
But getting to that question again, is the current funding right now that's funding our roads would be maintained as well as the .2% on top?
Yes, in fact, it's, it is not the intent to use this to supplant funding in other areas. It's used to be an enhancement to the street department to do those projects that otherwise wouldn't be done. One of the things that was important to staff to bring to the council were projects that we've identified that we would actually show, not just the council, but more importantly the public, what that means. I mean, it's, if you're asking the public to support something, we want to show the public what in fact that would mean in terms of results. Thanks.
I'd just like to say thanks for the, to the staff that, the documents that's provided in the agenda tonight contains a lot of the information that I saw or thought was lacking in the last presentation. We've got the miles of road laid out, we've got the miles of alleys laid out, we've got a timeline established as to why this should go on an earlier ballot versus the general election when it should be, should have been cheaper. But reviewing the timeline of this proposal, this makes sense to me. Years ago, before Squim adopted their similar ordinance, Chief Bill Dickinson at the time with Squim Police, he sat down and he rolled this all out to me and talked about if this goes forward, that they're going to have a, through public vote, that they're going to have a new city hall and police headquarters paid for through this .2% sales tax. And of course, we all know now that Squim did go forward with that and consequently does have those new facilities. So I have local knowledge of this working as intended, and I will be in full support of this going forward to the voters for their ultimate decision on this.
Is there any, I remember the council wishes to raise a question coming before we move forward to an action here. Let me just, I, this is an extraordinary opportunity for us, the citizens of Port Angeles, who here before have had this burden basically on our shoulders exclusively. We, by all estimates, we have about 3.4 to 4 million visitors every year who come through Port Angeles. And they will be contributing to this pot of money. Every time they stay in a hotel, every time they buy something where sales tax is involved, they are going to bring revenue to our city to help us pave our alleys, fix our roads. I'm reminded, as many of you are, I suppose, that every time we shop in Squim, at the River Road or wherever, we are contributing to the attractiveness, safety, and security of the roads in Squim. I think this is a great opportunity for Transportation Benefit District ordinance to enable literally millions of people to help us do what we need to do, which here before we are looking. This is a, this whole business seems so logical to me. I hope that the public will come to understand what we're up to, let this help them lighten their load a little bit, if you will, and the outtake will correspond for our city will be better, and our roads will be more safer and more secure than we are now. Chair would entertain a, before I do that, I need to read the ordinance, of course. So let me do that first. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, to enact a new chapter in 11420, the Port Angeles Meniscal Code, Port Angeles Transportation Benefit District, in quote, "Establishing a Transportation Benefit District and Fix It At Time When The Same Shall Become Effective."
Second?
The motion has been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, opposed to any, for second? Motion appears to pass in amiss. Thank you, staff, for your thorough presentations over the last two weeks. So let's go back to our scheduled agenda, which will take us to see public comment. I have two names here of individuals who've expressed an interest in sharing comments with us this evening. Before we do that, just I want to remind everybody that we have a second public comment period in about a part of our meeting. So our first public comment session will begin at about 6:51. Those who come forward, the lights will come on, it's green, you have about three minutes. The yellow light that comes on will begin about 2 minutes and 30 seconds. I'll alert you that you need to summarize your comments. And so please come forward with the, Susan Morehead, followed by Michael. Say your name, your address for the record. Susan Morehead.
Obviously, my name is Susan Morehead. I live up on West 13th Street. And obviously, the community decides there's lots of issues, but tonight my issue is going to be on the drug problem. I've been here only a couple of years, and apparently we seem to have a rather serious drug problem on the way, along with obviously the crime that goes with that. And there's been a few different incidences that have happened in our park recently that have brought it further to my attention. Anyway, it doesn't seem to be getting any better. And we do have to blame the police department for their recent arrest on the fellow, I don't recall his name, but they just arrested somebody who had quite a load of heroin and death on him. So kudos to the police department. Anyway, I keep hearing people say, when they take their kids to the parks, they're finding dirty heels in the park and profaned scribbled all over things, and it's just like, it seems to be getting worse. How do we make this better? And so some of the people that I've been talking to are talking about maybe getting together with you all and getting some sort of work thing going where we can figure out what can the community do besides sit back and maybe just call the police and not, you know, I mean, we feel like our hands are tied. We need to have a way to work with, work with the police on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Mr. Mayor, good evening. You may notice I wrote second on, next to that's my name.
Oh, no, no, that meant. Second probably called me here.
If you please.
Oh, okay.
I, yes, but I can just play from the sheriff's.
Is Susan still here? Susan, I, this is, these public comment periods normally do not include members of the council to converse.
Correct.
And to take notes. But let me, here, you're in this, in which you've spoken, the huge and horrific issue you referred to, I just want to maybe note that I, along with Marco Zayas from the county commissioner's office recently, called members of the professional and civic committee together for a roundtable discussion of how we might make sure everybody is on the same table, the same messaging, let people know in the community that public officials, county and city are very concerned about the challenges they face as professionals. Please change the Port Angeles Squim officials from across coming with their system. There'll be another one of these roundtables soon. I just want you to know that there are people who are working really, really hard to try to get their arms around this issue. Thank you for your concern.
And so then who would I contact to get more involved then?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec?
You can contact either I, you can contact Marco Zayas. If you want, just send me a note at my email, city email, let me know of your interest.
Okay.
See if we can keep you where, what's going on.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, I'd like also appoint a privilege of addressing public comment. So also another committee, and we had a ceremony earlier about honoring our volunteers. We also have a committee that serves on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I believe they still meet once a month. There's actually a large group, I couldn't tell you, but I would guess their numbers are over 30, and they also volunteer performing different things for our Parks Department. Corey Delacott is on staff here, he's the Parks and Rec Department head. I'd urge you to contact him about that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Lee. So I, next item, I did late items, is there a member of this council that would wish to place on this or future duty?
Mayor, council, I don't have a late item, but I thought I would take just a quick opportunity to introduce a new face to you. You probably see that to my right, two down, we have a new face that you've never seen before. Her name is Cindy Jensen. She is our interim finance director as we're going out for a search for a permanent replacement for, replacement for Byron Olson. And we had Tess Agasson, one of our senior accountants, filling in for a while until we could even get an interim finance director. And Tess, I really appreciate that she stepped up in addition to all of her duties, took on that role, and it was a lot of work, and she had a hard time juggling her job with all the other responsibilities and items that needed to be done. But I'm sure Tess is relieved now that we have an interim on board. And just a quick background about Cindy, she is a native of Yakima Valley, and her family grows apples and Concord grape for Welch's, the Welch's grapefruit and all the stuff that we drink. She has accounting degree from the University of Arkansas. She worked in public accounting for several years in St. Louis, Missouri, but got tired in the Midwest, and returned to Yakima Valley, working for several years in the fruit industry. And then she worked, went to work for the city of Yakima, worked up through the ranks in which she had last been the finance director for five years. Most importantly, by far, I'm sure, and she would agree, that she has three children, five grandchildren, and a grandchild on the way. So while she seems to like Port Angeles her second day on the job, I think there are things that probably are going to be pulling her back to Yakima Valley very soon, but we do appreciate her having, having her on board, and I'm sure she's going to be immersed into a lot of items that we have going on. It will be an enjoyment to work with her.
Well, welcome.
Yes, welcome. You have the city council. You're here to share a few of your experiences.
I'm enjoying the city. It's a beautiful city, and it's interesting to come to the, to the water. We have mountains in Yakima, but not, not the water, so that's been fun. And I've been welcomed very warmly by staff and other even members of the community. So I appreciate the chance to do this and try to carry my weight with the finance department and give them a chance to keep on doing what they need to be doing. And the audit will be coming soon, so I need to free them up to do that. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you for sharing your, your experience, your comments, and your work in meetings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Under late items, it was brought up by the public commenter. This is something that has been going on for a while. Our citizens are told to build a fence, lock their doors, call the police. These folks are putting extra pressure on citizens to deal with their drug problems. Corey's staff is dealing with it every single day. There are needles in our parks, excuse my language, there's crap on the walls, there's language on the walls, and folks are fed up with all of this. And you're worried about where your kids are even playing in any of the parks. And folks want to get together and have a town hall meeting, and they want to talk about it. And I think the committees are great, but folks need to start talking about it now, and I think there's a lot of citizens out there that may have some ideas, some good ideas, to deal with the problem. But it's not getting better, it's getting worse. I spoke with Corey earlier, he admitted it's getting worse. This isn't something we're going to be able to hide. It has to be out in the public, and we've got to start talking about it and figure it out. And it's, it's out of control. The police are doing, I'm sure, what they can do. They can't be everywhere all the time. You know, there's some property that was cleared over on 8th Street. There's a reason why that property was cleared. Should that guy have to clear that property? No. But he did to let the light through on the house behind it. And it's, it's out of control. And I think that as a council, we need to facilitate putting together a town hall meeting of some kind with the police department and start talking about it. Because our kids are at risk, our public safety is at risk, officers are at risk, and it's, I guess folks are wondering, you know, these committees, how long do these committees go before something, before action occurs? go before something, before action occurs? And folks are waiting for action and they've been waiting for action and it still continues every day.
I'd support that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would hope that the council would direct staff to do what's necessary to establish a town hall meeting night with the appropriate people, perhaps Parks and Rec and of course the police department, whoever you think would be important. But I think if we direct them to start that process now, maybe we can have accomplished within thirty days.
I'd love to see something just get started. We need to have the public know that, that we're rolling along.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, Dan, it's quite clear that there's a consensus on the council to begin to plan for a community town hall on this topic of drug abuse, substance abuse. I'll refer it to you and have you get that to us.
I have that down.
And let me just say in conjunction with Mike, Susan, or Eric, like Marco Zayas, you know, Mike, you're absolutely right. It's not getting better. But I, I would be terribly remiss if I didn't acknowledge again that there are some really, really hardworking professionals as well as community volunteers who are in this daily grind, especially more than daily, salary. But the problem is, is in cities. And if I thought, or any of these individuals thought that we could gain a community will say with great energy and passion, maybe it would help them too. Believe me, because they, they need help. But I witnessed it, I see it, I talked to them, right? Thank you for bringing that forward. Dan, go back to the center. Okay, item E on our agenda, the senior's consent agenda. Before I read this, is there any item on a consent agenda that we have before? Okay, let me read the consent agenda. Expenditure report from March 11 through March 24. In the amount of $3,251,111.25. Overhead reconduct re-conducturing project CL-06 2016 final acceptance. And number three, material purchase, the yard slash area light replacement contract MEC 17 dash 04 project CL-02-12 and award contract.
Motion to approve consent agenda as read, item one through three.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to approve the consent agenda as read. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed if any. Thank you. I'm going to move then now to item H, resolutions not required in public period. An update to personnel policy and procedures manual, chapter six regarding attendance and hours of work in the inner areas of H1. Is Abby here?
No, Abby is not here tonight. She unfortunately caught something from her kids. She's homesick for the last couple of days. So I will go ahead and briefly go through this with council. And what you have before you tonight are some changes to the city's personnel policy and procedure manual, adding a new section that provides a process to approve alternate work schedules outside of the normal hours of operation. And as you know, for the most part, the city is an eight to five organization and it's actually set in city ordinance by the council. There are exceptions to that. We have, for instance, public safety that is on duty 24/7 with a unique schedule to accommodate that extended work schedule. And there are some other exceptions in the city of different departments that have alternate work schedules. What, what we have noticed over the period of time is that throughout the city, there are employee work groups that do have individuals within those work groups and also have alternate work schedules. And there has not been a process in the past to be able to look at that from the city's perspective. It was done by the department, but it was not done by the city manager's office, or actually it wasn't done even through HR in many cases, human resources. And in some cases, we have violations of the Fair Labor Standards Act. And in other cases, it may not be an advantage to the city to have somebody in an alternate work schedule, working outside of normal business hours. So what we have put in place and one of the things that we want to ensure is that we have a process, an accountable process for identifying those positions where it does make sense to have those alternate work schedules and have a process for approving those. And where it doesn't make sense, but somebody requests it, it just doesn't happen because again, it doesn't meet the needs of the city. And so it also provides some guidance in some other areas that have occurred in the city. And I do, I should be able to answer any questions you also have on that subject.
All right, if we remember the city council, Dave?
Yeah, I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has city staff done a cost analysis to this being added to our municipal code?
Actually, you, if anything, you shouldn't see any increase in costs. All you're doing is adding an accountability piece to a practice that did not have that accountability in the past. This is not enabling something new. This is actually trying to put our arms around it and actually, again, add a process to it that has not been in place in the past.
So also reading through it, I didn't see any, I didn't see any reference to state and federal labor laws. Should we, Mr. Blower, as a matter of record, for the city's sake, have a reference that we're not to violate that? Or do you think that part is necessary?
I don't think it's necessary to state in the policy that we're not going to violate the federal laws. Those would supersede any policy that we have. And so we will still be bound by collective bargaining and by federal and state labor laws.
Okay, then the other thing too, coming on the heels of that mandatory overtime for the fire department, I see no reference whatsoever to an overtime authorization to, to make this work out for the betterment, I guess, of the departments is, there's no mention of overtime.
Overtime is really outside of the scope of this policy. This policy is intended to address what would be considered somebody's base hours that they work. It also addresses a couple other issues that are in there that are minor compared to that issue, but overtime would be a separate issue. And generally, each department has an approval process for overtime that is in fact reviewed by the city manager's office. I can also say that overtime is something that I have recently been given monthly reports so that I can monitor overtime by each department and divisions within each department. And that is in the process of being monitored monthly. And that was, again, had nothing to do with this policy. That's a fiscal issue.
So then, having heard that, then it sounds to me like staff wouldn't have a problem with putting in an overtime prevention clause through this, again, municipal code update?
I guess I don't follow because really if we're going to do, if we're going to address overtime, it should be in a separate policy, not in a policy that deals with the standard work week or alternate.
Yeah, I'm just afraid of the stuff that it doesn't say and that this in the future may be viewed as a window to exploit some personnel. Again, it doesn't address overtime, it doesn't address any state and federal labor laws. I would feel better if it had that. It sounds like it's no big deal, but personally, I would feel better if it had that.
What I can tell you, if you, if you walk through the policy, and I, I'm intimately involved in this because it was my direction to have HR work on a policy with me that we brought forward to the directors and then we brought forward to the unions. And the unions did review this. We did receive comment back from the unions, we addressed those comments. But if you walk through it, HR is one of the mandatory requirements to review it and HR does review it for those labor laws. And prior to this policy, there could have been alternate work weeks approved or alternate work schedules approved for an employee that wasn't reviewed by HR, so those things weren't looked at. And something that, something else that was addressed by the policy, when HR reviews it too, many employees are covered under a bargaining agreement. And we want to make sure that direct dealing doesn't occur outside of that bargaining agreement for some of these alternate work schedules too, for employees that are union employees.
Yes, my past history involved with union labor, actually, I got into quite a bit of the labor law. And I think it still stands that employer cannot continually change your work hours or your work week. And I just see language that's concerning of me that we may be putting some unexpected working conditions on our employees. So again, I would feel better if this language, again, had overtime prevention clause and had a reference to state and federal labor laws. I'd just feel better seeing that.
And Dan, could you give us any examples of employee positions that would either have been taking advantage of this type of flex situation or would have a desire to do that? And is it more at the request of the employee to help facilitate their needs versus the city saying you have to start working different hours from home or something like that? I would say that in many cases it comes up because it better meets the needs of the employee. And what needs to be looked at is sometimes when it meets the needs of the employee and it also meets the needs of the city, that might be a good relationship. But somebody needs to review it from the overall view of the needs of the city. And there are situations that, again, because we're an eight to five organization, I think what's important to, which we all know, there are two types of customers that city employees serve. The most obvious customer is why we exist, and that is the public. They are the ones that we serve. And again, they have an expectation, our normal hours are eight to five. The other employees though, that we serve, or the, excuse me, the other service that employees have, they serve each other. You know, we have support groups that, that work to support each other and we rely on those individuals to be here during normal working hours to answer questions we may have, to deal with problems we may have. And so again, we serve the public and we serve each other in being able to serve the public. And we need to make sure that if we have an alternate work schedule, that it doesn't disrupt that service to either the public or each other internally. And again, all this does, and I feel it's very important, is to have some accountability and process, some accountability process that was approved by council so that there's a process to follow on something this important. And we also need to make sure that we don't do anything, and I agree with Councilman Witten, and this is designed to do that, so that we follow all labor laws, including FLSA. And again, that we meet our internal customer needs and our external customer needs.
Right, I saw your book.
Well, I somewhat have a similar concern to Thompson member Witten. It's easy to schedule people to overtime as opposed to pay them for overtime. But I have the opposite conclusion. Seems to me the way the system works right now, that's more likely to be a case where employee's schedule is changed without going through proper process. Seems to me that establishing this does present the opportunity to avoid that kind of scheduling and that this schedule would have to be vetted through a city policy as opposed to just the desire of the particular work group to work those hours. They need to establish it through this policy. So while I have the same concern as Thompson member Witten, I believe that what you have in front of you, actually, it is a first step to try to avoid that from happening. So I think this is a good measure.
Any other member of the council wishes to discuss this before I read the resolution?
I think I just want to add that I do agree, I appreciate the fact that this is clear, that you'll be able, I guess, the employees will at least now have a more clear sense of what is expected of them and their work hours and what they can negotiate, what they can't negotiate.
Okay, let me read the resolution. Resolution of the city council of the city of Washington, amending the personnel policy and procedures manual by adding section 6.04 to chapter six regarding attendance and hours of work.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that the city council adopt the resolution to amend chapter six of the city's personnel policy and procedures manual and approve adding section 6.04 dash work schedules.
Seconded.
Motion has been made in seconded. For the questions, please, before I can call for the question. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Collins, I do realize this is a step in the right direction. It's a necessary housekeeping task, but it still doesn't quell my thoughts on exploitation maybe occurring either as an employer to the employee or as a city council member fiscally responsible for the city. We have no mention of overtime costs. We've been given a verbal cost analysis of being a moot point. I'd like to see this laid out better for us to vote on. And because I'm not sensing any type of changeup occurring in its present form, I will not be supporting it going forward.
Any other member of the council?
Well, I'm still quite supportive of Mr. Witten. But I think that if I understood correctly, any discussion of overtime should be in the overtime policy. You guys can go back and address how that affect, how this or alternate work schedules would be worked together with the overtime issues. Because I, I think it's easy for city employees to be, have very long work hours.
So we did, for some of us, that's true, but we're not on overtime. But one of the, one of the things we did is we had the unions review this policy. And the question of exploitation of the union member, that was addressed through the unions. And the wording is such where that would not occur, this cannot be used to save overtime. Contractual overtime is outlined by each of the bargaining unit agreements that we have. And this would not conflict with that. In fact, it's during the preamble, it pretty much clarifies where union contracts take precedent over the policy itself. But it isn't to be used to create overtime, it's actually used to wrap a process around something that we don't have a process in place now. And it's really, well, that's, that's what it's intended to do.
Is there any other member of the council who is not here before I had a chance to comment? I said I'd give them an opportunity. I did say to you, Sam, I'll save the last remarks here to leave if no one else. Okay, Ray, closing comment.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, the resolution that we're actually voting on, I'd like to read it for the public actually also. Whereas the city desires to update its personnel policies and procedures manual, chapter six slash attendance and hours of work by adding new section 6.04 work schedules and allowing the city manager to approve a non-represented employee's work schedule that varies from the normal schedule as long as the business operations continue as required by municipal code. There's no reference to overtime, there's no reference of federal and state labor laws. I, I just don't think we have enough information to go forward. Again, I won't be supporting this.
Okay. Motion has been made in seconded to adopt this resolution. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed if any?
No.
Okay.
Before I do move on, I do want to just bring up one more item so there's no confusion for the public. I believe reading the resolution is good, that it would be I, I believe reading the resolution is good, that it would be good to have the, there's a pretty extensive attachment, which is the policy that outlines pretty much everything we discussed.
So you want the motion to be revised to include the attachment?
No.
Just going to make a reference. All right. Okay, that takes us to, under other, other condition, considerations, item aye would be a report on the petition to align the full new city council abandonment of city code status. That's done in packet as item one. And then, turn it over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. And I'm going to kind of walk through this. It's going to take me a little while to walk through it, so if you can bear with me and then we'll have time for questions. So a little bit of the background, in May 2016, a citizen petition was filed by the group Our Water, Our Choice. The petition, which received more than enough signatures, asked the voters of Port Angeles to decide whether to change from a code city to a second-class city in order to elect a full city council. The wording "elect a full city council" in the petition itself is in boldface to add emphasis. The petition came during a very controversial time that centered on the city fluoridating its municipal water supply. Specifically, many citizens were unhappy that after council requested an advisory poll and the majority of utility customers who responded were in favor of discontinuing fluoride, the council elected to continue fluoride. Before I go any further with the background and the rest of my discussion, I do want to recognize the fundamental process used by the people who signed the petition. I have great respect for the citizen's right to request the alimony. Few rights are as precious as those afforded to citizens who, through grassroots efforts, demand action by their government. The process and the related citizens' rights are not in question. There is, however, a serious question about the validity of the petition. That is, if citizens abandon code city status, would state law allow for the election of a full city council? I think we can all agree that state laws governing this process are complicated and can lead to different interpretations. And that is evidenced by the fact that the attorney for Our Water, Our Choice, Gerald Steele, provided his opinion. And he definitely states in his opinion that he feels that not only can it happen, it needs to happen. Bill Bloor, city attorney, provided his opinion, and it's the opposite of Gerald Steele's opinion. And, but it's the same state statutes. Due to the differences of opinion as to the legal consequences, I opted to seek an independent review by a subject matter expert, Hugh Spitzer. Hugh Spitzer is a professor of law at the University of Washington. He has written numerous articles, law review articles, but most importantly, he co-authored a book titled The Washington State Constitution. I believe that was co-authored. The other author was a retired Supreme Court judge. Professor Spitzer was given both Mr. Steele's and Mr. Bloor's opinion, as well as he conducted his own research. In fact, Gerald Steele provided numerous other documents, and I made sure that Mr. Spitzer, Professor Spitzer, received all that information. Professor Spitzer was asked to provide an independent analysis on whether the election of a full council would be allowed under current state statutes. In short, his analysis concludes that if citizens elected to revert back to a second-class city, a new election of all seven council members would not be authorized or allowed. Professor Spitzer explained the intent behind the statutes as they are written today. City council members are not elected outside of the normal statutory framework provided in statute unless their basic roles and responsibilities change. So in Port Angeles, as you know, council has legislative-only responsibilities. The executive day-to-day responsibilities are handled by the city manager and are delegated to the department directors on down. If Port Angeles reorganized under a strong mayor form of government, with the mayor taking on the executive responsibilities, a new mayor would be elected because of, a new office would be created with new duties and responsibilities. So you would need to elect that individual. Other council members would not be elected because they would continue to perform the same duties and responsibilities as before, those duties and responsibilities that they were elected for. That didn't change. If Port Angeles reclassified from a code city to a second-class city, as being proposed by the petition, each council member would retain their existing legislative responsibilities, and the reclassification would not create a new election. Your roles and responsibilities that you were elected for would not change. There is a mechanism in place through recall to remove elected officials before the end of their terms. The requirements to recall are specific and difficult to meet. There's a reason for that. Sometimes people disagree with your decisions. To do what is proposed in the petition, which specifically says to elect, in order to elect, a full city council, is in essence, a way to recall the council without using the process outlined in state constitution. I feel confident in that Professor Spitzer's opinion is an accurate interpretation of current state law. After explaining his opinion about the petition, Professor Spitzer then notes there are at least three courses of action available to the city council. Of the three courses available to the council, Professor Spitzer recommends the city seek a declaratory judgment. In a declaratory judgment, the city would ask for a definitive court ruling in which a judge declares what the law is regarding the petition. The advantage of this is that it would eliminate any confusion about the validity of the petition and the consequences that would result if the petition were approved by voters. This is a conservative, cautious course of action, something you would expect from an attorney. As a second possible course of action, the council could refuse to put this petition on the ballot. To do that, the council would need to find the petition deceptive and misleading. The reason it would be deceptive and misleading is that it promises something that they cannot deliver, election of a full new city council. I don't recommend this course of action. As I said at the beginning of my statement, I have great respect for the rights and citizens to petition their government. It is because of my personal respect for the right to petition that I cannot in good faith recommend that the council follow this course of action. In addition, again, in my opinion, I believe that this course of action would lead to additional confusion and controversy, something that is not good for anyone. A third possible course of action is to place the petition on the November ballot before election. This course of action would allow the voters to vote on the petition. The ballot title would reflect the petition as precisely as it was presented to those who were signing the petition. Although I have joined with Professor, Professor Spitzer in recommending the most conservative approach to you as the council, you must recognize that it is still the decision of the council to be made in what happens. And there is something to be said in favor of this third course of action. It is the only course of action that has the possibility of avoiding a challenge and/or litigation. Both of the other two courses of action, including the one that I recommended to you, virtually guarantee that the proponents or opponents will take some action. By doing that, it's going to take additional time and it's going to cost additional funds. This course of action also is one, the one that most clearly respects the rights of the citizens to petition the government. Now it's open up for the council discussion, and staff is here to provide any additional comments or input, but the council should discuss this.
I saw Dan, the case, here, move.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan and Bill, I appreciate all the efforts that you've put into this and research that's been taking place behind the scenes for quite some time. I appreciate the chance to get all the paperwork and the opinion of Mr. Steele from his point of view, and the contrary opinions from the other attorneys. And when it gets down to some choices, in your packet, the recommendation was to seek the declaratory judgment. Respectfully, I'm going to have to personally disagree with that course of action. And the reason I would not be in favor of that, regardless of how much I am not in favor of the overall petition, there were a thousand-plus citizens that signed the petition and want this to come forward. By seeking the declaratory judgment, it's my point of view that that would be kind of setting that request aside and saying, you know, maybe we don't really believe that you know what you're doing. We're going to get yet another opinion and maybe attempt to shut you down before the citizens can even hear from you. And, and I don't like that. I, I think that it's really important that the option that you gave towards the end where the ballot is reflecting exactly what the petitioners are asking for, including the intent stating that it's for the purpose of getting rid of all the city council members, I think that's very important to get out in front of voters, so that we can hear their response to the exact request that the petitioners are asking for. So that's going to be the recommendation from my perspective, and I would hope that some other council members would see it fit to, to agree with that.
So, Sharon, Dan?
I have a question for, for Mr. Bloor. Mr. Bloor, I understand that a second-class city has no right for initiative and for petitions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So therefore, the people that were signing this petition, I wasn't there, so I, I don't know if they were told that they would be signing away their rights to petition if this went through. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood that a second-class city has no rights to initiate a petition.
Mr. Mayor, can then follow up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's very heartening to hear those particular comments from Mr. Gase. Thank you for those words. I'd like to add a little, another dimension on this. I'd actually like to see us proceed on a parallel course of vote, of both, a vote by residents on the second-class city status and also seeking a declaratory judgment of election of all council seats. In this agenda tonight, and for, for the folks at home or people here that have smartphones in, our published agenda on the city council website, is all of these arguments pro and con that, that we're referring to. So there is, I think, three different attorneys, two different viewpoints, of course. Again, referring to this agenda is an outline of legal opinion by several lawyers. Most all cite that even though a motion by city council, we can't hold elections from, again, legal analysis, we can't hold elections outside dates called for by our state legislature. I'd just like to let everyone know again, that we're $5,500 into this, getting our first legal, outside legal analysis. And I just want to ask my fellow council members, where do we draw the line financially, fighting the folks that have signed under penalty of perjury the initiative in front of us? So again, I support Councilmember Gase, but I'd like to go on a parallel course, put this out to the voters. As a matter of record, I do not support second-class city. I think we have many more rights. I think we have ways of addressing particular council actions, and that's through the ballot box. Basically, every two years, there's someone up for election here.
Councilmember Brooke, and then, Michael.
Thank you. I, when I read this, it was a very interesting read, because you do have lawyers, and these two lawyers do not agree, and actually, with the third one who wrote the opinion. So you're going to have different opinions from different lawyers. So I think, one, I, I do agree that, I think this petition needs to go out to the voters. One of the things that concerns me now is that the reason why people signed this petition, they signed this petition to get rid of city council. Whether that can happen or not, we're going to need to get some legal help on that. So I don't want to think that when they go to vote, that one, they're going to get rid of city council and that's going to work, or two, that do they really understand what a second-class city means? So my biggest concern is that we do listen to the people, there were these petitions that were signed, but that we do a really good job of trying to put out exactly what a second-class city means versus what we have. People need to know that. And like I said, that's my fear about putting something out there that's not quite correct. But this is what the petition that the people signed. And I know I've talked to a lot of people, said, oh, I had no idea that that's what this meant. And so I think we need to have, I guess, I know we've got one group, you know, who is going to go ahead and push for this. I'm hoping that we'll have another group that will actually hope, you know, if we can get the media to truly educate folks about what the difference between the first-class city and the second-class city means. And again, like I said, all these documents, I'm hoping are going to be available to the public, so you can see where the lawyers are, you know, disagreeing and what the disagreement may be about whether we're going to get a new city council or not. I mean, at this point, I, I think, looking at this, we are probably not going to get a new city council. And so knowing that, and if it's going to go into the petition like that, I think we've got to be careful. So that's my concern, that it's, it may be not legal as it's stated, but I do think it supersedes, listening to the people, supersedes the legality of this petition. So if it goes up there and it doesn't pass, then we don't have to spend a single dime. So I would say, instead of going parallel paths, I would say, let's just put it forward. If, should it fail, then we don't have to spend a dime. If it passes, we will go ahead and spend the money to figure out what's legal, what's not legal about it, and then I think we can move on with that. But I think we really do need to listen to the people, because council has not done that in the past, and I think we've suffered for it, and I think the, the city as a whole suffered, because we didn't, we weren't able to get to more important issues. And so I think we really do need to put this petition forward to the voters.
Michael.
Thank you, Sissy, for pointing that out. And I agree, this needs to go on the ballot. I also agree with Lee, though, that we need a decision on this also. It's, to not put this on the ballot is once again, as a council, not listening to what the people want. And if a judge decides that the petition is invalid, that's on the judge, that's not on us as a council. We didn't stop the action. And, tried to read through what each lawyer's opinion is. Last time I checked, I thought that most judges were lawyers, too. So that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to get it right either. So I don't know who's right, I'm not even going to take a guess at it. And, but you know, as a, as a council, we didn't listen to the people, and that's what got those thousand people to sign that petition. And it wasn't, this didn't have to do with necessarily, it, it was a catalyst that fluoride started this. But the end result was, people aren't heard and they're angry. And to not- And to not put this on the ballot is just one more thorn in the side of that. And we need to be able to move on past this as soon as possible. And I do agree with Sissy that both sides need to be presented clearly and fairly so that people know what they are voting for. And that's why I also agree with Lee. We can't change the petition. People signed it and on the bottom of it, it says, elect a new council. And we can't just take that off of there. I don't know how long, do you know how long it takes to get a decision?
You might have to.
Years?
Not necessarily, but there's so many variables, it's really hard. I could not give you any certainty that we would have a decision far enough in front of the election to have affect the education of the populace. It could, it could be, but again, there are lots of variables and I wouldn't, what I wouldn't want to do is mislead you. I would not want to say, oh yeah, it takes two months and we'll have the answer, because I can't do that, there are a lot of variables. And this is the kind of thing that may end up not being heard by a local judge, because I think a couple of the local judges are residents in the city and so they'd be voting, they'd be ruling on something that could potentially flip itself. And so, no, I can't give you, I would like to say that ideally, two months, but I can't promise that.
And let me just add too, and Bill can maybe elaborate on it a little bit more, but if you go down the road of the declaratory judgment, there's a, it could be appealed and it could be appealed to the Court of Appeals and then from there, it could be appealed to the Supreme Court. So when you think of it, think of it in two terms, think of it in terms of being able to get the answers before the election. I mean, there are other possibilities that are beyond our control just based on appeals because again, you know, it's someone's opinion, although it carries a lot of weight, it still can be appealed. The other thing is that the amount of time, energy, and money to go through all those processes, should it, that should be discussed a little bit more because I heard the council talk about putting it on the ballot. And although I hate putting something on the ballot where it doesn't carry the force to carry it through, it was what the people signed and if the, if the majority of the electorate don't agree with that and they vote it down, then it just, it's done. If they do vote for it and there's a question over legality, then it could be dealt with at that time also. But you just need to think that just because, even if we get a declaratory judgment back in time, it may not be over.
Thank you, Dan. I want to point out also that this is the kind of issue that really has statewide interest because it is, the effect of it is, is a back door to a recall. And it affects, it attempts to affect the recall of the council without going through the steps that are set out by law for a recall. And so it's not just, so if this, if we were to initiate a court action on this, it would draw on more interest than just the Port Angeles community because potentially it could affect all other code cities in the state as a means to do a backdoor recall. And so there is a possibility that it could end up going to Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court.
Right, did you have your, is that a guess for?
Yes.
I would like to speak.
Yes.
I think everybody else is.
Absolutely.
I believe that.
I will always be last.
Well, I hear all council pretty much saying that they believe that this needs to go on the ballot as it is considered a petition. And I won't oppose that. I agree with comments that have been made that said, saying that I would support changing the city in a decolonial way, if you were in the, if you like, to help to penalize the community for a long time in the future about their ability to petition their government or use funding that is available to code cities that may not be available to state cities or to operate the way a second-class city could operate. So I also believe that it's inappropriate to recall the council, but I will not oppose putting this on the agenda or on the ballot as it was presented by the citizen. I, I'll reserve judgment on this because I think the petition isn't correct.
I know a couple of other hints, let me just, if I might. I think as I read through the memo, as I've contemplated this whole matter for a very long time, and with the comments that have been offered tonight, it is absolutely clear and imperative to me that we put this matter before the public as an obvious issue. To do less than that would be, would not be, would not be right from Lee. But Lee is in effect asking, Lee, if I'm wrong, please. What I'm hearing is that there's an option that would have two things to take by some continuous way, that is, the ballot would, this matter would go to the ballot, but also that there would be an attempt made to get a declaratory judgment to help all of this community better understand what this is all about. But I've heard now just moments ago that there probably isn't time for that process to evolve. Is there, is there, is there some other, some other pathway that we had not yet to point and discuss yet?
Dan, I guess for your debate on this, I would say that if you go down this, you know, go down the simultaneous path, just understand that even if we get a declaratory judgment back in time, which we may not, you know, in time to really educate people before the vote because there are a lot of things beyond our control, and I would recommend we go to a judge outside of Quillum County, somebody that's not politically connected to this area, somebody that can make more of an independent decision. Having said that, even if we get it back in time, there are, there's an appeal process that could make this thing go on a long time, take a lot of time, energy, and money and for both sides. And so there may be wisdom in putting it on the ballot and again, if the voters do turn it down, it's over. You know, especially if you put it on exactly the way it's intended, the way that the petition's written. So we have, and I think you heard tonight, we have a lot of big issues hitting the city of Port Angeles. I can't even begin to tell you some of the projects, you know, that we're, that we're finalizing. We have the issue that was brought up tonight about drug abuse, all these things that we need to put our time and energy into. And if we're going to go down a road, I would just suggest you think about taking one of two roads and committing to that without trying to do both simultaneously because again, there are just a lot of things beyond our control if we're trying to get that information out before the actual vote itself.
Okay. I think I saw Dan standing over the president, just about, Dan, cases. Dan, did you have a final question?
Yes, I did. Two comments on two topics that have been brought up very briefly and not to rehash a lot of stuff, but it has been mentioned that we didn't listen to the people. I just want to make it clear that in the past, we listened to some different people. We didn't necessarily listen to everybody. I listened personally to every medical doctor and every dentist in the city and followed that direction. So I just don't agree that we didn't listen to the people. The second item is the topic of expense to the city and we brought that up, I appreciate that. I think if we forged ahead without the declaratory judgment, there is some risk that we may encounter some additional expense. But if we, I'm a person, I like to look at track record. If we look at the last 10 years, we've seen the opposition group be involved with the city with three different lawsuits, one of which went all the way to the Supreme Court. Those lawsuits cost the city over $120,000 out of our general fund in addition to over $600,000 of expense to the city that was paid for by Delta Dental as a courtesy. So we're into this, a huge amount of money, that group lost every single challenge, every single lawsuit against us. So I think there's a good track record that we could feel comfortable going ahead, putting vote to the people as proposed by the petitioners and not really have a concern about any extra money cut out.
Lee, I mean, did I see your name? Lee, it's just you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to follow up Councilmember Gase's comments that the reason that that cost us so much money and this could possibly cost us even more is because city council didn't listen to a majority of respondents. Of our latest survey, we've had some council members claim that because it wasn't turned in, it wasn't counted as a yes. So again, it's our job to listen to you. When we don't do that, you have every right to act out and I fully support that. So, Sissy, getting back to your comments, a sequence of declaratory judgment before, I was hoping to get that done before the ballot preparation, the wording of the ballot, but it doesn't sound like that's possible. I think I've got the cart before the horse here. I think going back to several opinions here is actually back to the wording of, of the petition. Guess I had it here in front of me, but it does talk about the election of a new city council. And if that's how our wording is formed on the ballot for the question, if it's successful, we'll go forward from there. I promise to act on it. I promise to listen to everyone that votes in our democratic process. I just, I'm going to take back my parallel path thing and I would fully support, let's just go forward with this honoring the intentions. It's going to be our job as representatives of the community to talk to folks about this and through that, then other conversations are going to occur of the pluses and minuses. And I guess I want to reflect on one comment in particular that I've heard several times from different people is their complaint of our different committees that don't have a public discussion point that allow no public input. And I've heard repeatedly from staff that under our form of city government, we do have, city committees are open to public comment period. If that's the case, what I'd ask staff is to review all committee agenda meeting minutes and make sure that a public comment period is added to every one of our committees. I know as vice chair of UAC, I've shut people down because I was told, no public comment. Now, because this is raised up, I'm all of a sudden hearing, whoa, we have public comment? I have yet to see it on our agenda for the UAC. And there's other committees, I'm quite sure are in the same case. So I think this has become an education point for everyone involved with our city government.
Sissy.
So I'd just simply like to move to request the city manager to place the petition on the ballot.
Second. Okay. Any further comments?
Yes. Yeah, I believe that the petition needs to reflect exactly what the petition calls for.
Exactly.
Yes, the process is that if you want to go down this path, we on staff will present a resolution that contains a ballot title. It'll come back to you and so the city council actually must by resolution request the county to put it on the November ballot and at the same time, you'll approve the ballot title, but we'll make sure that the ballot title reflects precisely what was contained in the petition.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, Kim.
This is an interesting petition in that both sides, pro and con, have spoken against it. People who have come to city council have said that this would be a bad choice and they didn't want to do it and they, you know, they've come to council saying, you know, we want you to, to change your, your choices or we'll do this, but we feel that it's a bad law. Second-class city and so I, and, and the leader of our law or our choice called it decolonial. I mean, so I think this is interesting, the people for and against this petition have spoken against it. I think it's important that we educate our citizens because if this petition is, is not legal, people need to understand what a second-class city is, how many of our life, our rights we would be losing and how detrimental it would be to our city. So I look forward to a vigorous discussion and public education.
Sissy, could you restate the motion in particular invited by Bill?
Sure. So I move to request the city manager to bring us a resolution that places this petition on the ballot as it is written.
And then the second was? Second. All those in favor, the motion is submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? Okay, I think that's a clear message and direction there. Thank you, members of the council, for this thoughtful and rigorous discussion. That takes us to J. Contracts of Purchasing City Pier Transit Mortgage Float Replacement Project PK-1106 contract that's in your package, J. Hunter.
Mayor, council.
I see Cory, you have a case, J. Hunter.
That is. Mayor, council, I have some good news tonight. Before you, our two recommendations. The first one is to approve the purchase of our new city pier floats in the amount of $194,365.54 with Topper Floats Incorporated. And because the bid was so low, we recommended to the council that we approved an additional 80-foot float that was originally eliminated during the grant process. During the process, we had some ADA requirements and had to purchase an 80-foot ramp instead of a 40-foot ramp that was unforeseen cost, so we had to eliminate float seven. And float seven is identified in your memo and that is on the east side of the main structure. I can also let council know that since the memo was created, we've talked to the RCO office, we're able to utilize the 75-25 grant act, so that's great news. And we're already working with the Army Corps of Engineers to modify our permit to add the extra float, so I don't see any problems with that as well. We're looking to solve the floats in June and as we get closer, I'll give you guys more approximate dates so we can have a nice ribbon cutting ceremony down at the pier.
Thank you, Cory. Is any member?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move, because we need to have this done and wait for the floats to go in in June, that we approve and authorize the city manager to make an additional float purchase under the contract, project PK-1106, as well as authorize and approve and authorize the city manager to award and sign a contract, City Pier Transit Mortgage Float Replacement Project PK-1106 with Topper Industries of Woodland, Washington, in the amount of $194,365.54, including applicable taxes and authorize the city manager to make minor modifications to the contract if necessary.
Second, I'm too late.
Any other questions or comments before I call for the question?
Yes, yes, too late to second this, but I cleared it with a lot of passion. So this is so exciting for our town. Here we are, a waterfront city with a dock. with a dock right in the middle of our downtown, and no floats. I mean, that was terrible. So thank you so much for putting in for this grant. You heard us, we were all just so upset because of the poor condition of the previous float. They, I mean, I know they asked them to be removed for safety, but we didn't want them removed. And so this is wonderful. We're, I'm excited. We need to have a big ribbon-cutting, and thank you for your work on this. We're a waterfront city, we need our floats. Hooray, thanks so much.
Any other comments?
Yes, I was just making sure that the motion included that $75,000 piece in it, because --
Yeah, I think, was it $75,000 or $35,000?
$75,000.
$35,000.
Not to exceed $75,000.
Yeah, it did include that, I put it first.
Okay.
I didn't mention this, but the Army Corps of Engineers and for months.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion, Sissy?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Cory, I've got a question, or maybe Manager McKean. Reviewing the financials, we do have the low, low bid of $194K. And the additional $75K that's identified, or earmarked rather, for the new additional float. But there's also talk of, I'm trying to read with what's been provided, is, are two new 80-foot gangways included in the base bid of $194K?
No, Councilmember, wait a minute. It's just the one for the main structure, and we will still have the 40-foot gangway that we already have for the individual float number seven. And we'll be able to probably surplus the other 40-footer that we have on the other side.
Okay. I'm in. This is great. Before you know it, everyone will be squinting down there this summer under the lights. So, both say so, let's get this done.
Okay, that's a good segue. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, any?
If you'd like, I'd like you to go to the Farming Life Center meeting. Thank you.
So that takes us to K. or Jenny Council reports. I think last time I started with Brad, let's start with Sissy today.
I actually have no reports.
Baseball season's starting, go out and support our kids. And I would like to thank the lefties for supporting our kids. They have made the rounds from team to team, including juniors and Cal Ripken League, on practicing with those kids. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor, Kim. May I, Councilmember, please?
I'd like to apologize to Councilwoman Brooke for not making it to the farmer's market on Saturday. It was last Saturday.
No.
Couldn't make that when I was out of town. Couldn't get back in time. So it's this coming Saturday?
Yes.
Okay, we'll talk about that. No other report.
Councilmember, Wendy.
I'd like to report that this Saturday is the date, as far as I'm concerned. It's Lincoln Park Ponds, the Kids' Child Derby, 14 and younger, 7:30 a.m. sign-in. They've got a bunch of great fishing gear for the age-appropriate class winners, and I hope to be up there with several of my grandkids.
Okay, Brad Conley, celebrate. We had a wonderful opportunity this afternoon in our council meeting to celebrate and recognize the achievements of our volunteers who specifically served the city. But as you see, I did in fact, at night, many of you, virtually all of you standing, who served as volunteers at one point or another in your life, and this is a great opportunity this week to recognize all of you. I had a wonderful opportunity this afternoon after, while I did not, was unable physically to take part. A wonderful thing happened today that I want to bring to your attention to all of you. The local AmeriCorps group of young women chose to serve their, across the country, is what's called Mayor's Day of Service to respective communities wherever AmeriCorps resides. And most of our AmeriCorps women serve our school system in tutoring and helping our students in higher achievement in their academics. However, in this particular case, they, additionally, they chose this week, which is, again, the Volunteer Appreciation Week, they chose to do a project at what has been formerly known as Francis Street Park, now known as the 9/11 Memorial Park. I'm glad that Ellen Bernard is here. My wife and I had the opportunity about a year or so ago to be in New York City and to go into the very depths, the very bottom of the Twin Towers, and see remnants of that, the beams there at our park at Francis Street. It is an experience that neither women will ever forget. It's hard to put into words, actually. But thanks to the efforts of Ellen Bernard, of course, we have been chosen to recognize Francis Street Park. Normally, it's a beautiful park in which the AmeriCorps, young men and women, beautified that park in extraordinary way today. Tremeling, cutting, just a variety of things. It looks quite gorgeous. But I said to them, and I want you to know, it is Ellen's intent, and it was my intent today, to acknowledge the volunteers from AmeriCorps, that they honored the men and women who died at the Twin Towers on 9/11. So I encourage each of us, each of you, to take the opportunity this week to please go over to the park, walk through it, touch that beam, reflect on the men and women who died and the families who died in the 4th Sunday of that day. Ellen and those who have supported him have done the right thing. That park is now intended to celebrate and recognize that which took place on that very day. Thank you, Ellen. That takes us to Ellen Information, City Managers Reports.
Well, we do have various reports and minutes in your packet, but there are a couple that I do want to highlight. Probably the best news, I'll go over now. You remember, or it can reflect back, some of you, I know it can reflect back five years ago when, after a very short period of time of looking at our budget, we identified that our budget, this is prior to mid-year, was going to be out about $800,000. This is our general fund budget. By the end of the year, if we kept going down the road, we were going. And there were a lot of reasons for that. One of them was overestimated sales tax revenue. One of them was escalating criminal justice costs. But there were a myriad of reasons that that happened. Between five years ago and now, the council rolled up their sleeves, and staff rolled up their sleeves, and we worked on a long-range strategic financial planning process that included two primary parts. The first part included a lot of policies that pretty much governed how the city spent money, covered a lot of different areas, everything from debt to our reserve amount. And one example of that is our reserves were, for the general fund, were changed from 10% to 25%, primarily based on the fact that when they were at 10% decades ago, when they were implemented, sales tax was doing well every year because the economy was doing well, that you could increase property tax by up to 6% a year. And of course, now it's limited to 1%. And of course, sales tax is a lot flatter today. Even though we're seeing an uptick in sales tax, the economy's not doing what it was doing, you know, 12 years ago. Basically, our need to dip into reserves is greater today than it was back then. But more importantly, our ability to recover when we dipped into reserves is a lot more difficult today than it would have been years ago. So we increased up to 25%, and we're already there. I mean, that's one indicator of financial health. A really good indicator of financial health is how we, as an organization, can respond to a sudden major decrease of lost revenue. And with the sale of Napon, and the new buyer coming in, and retooling the facility, changing not only the equipment, but also looking at the processes and likely changing the processes it has, it's going to take up to 18 months to make that happen. And there's going to be a curtailment of operations, again, at the mill for a period of up to 18 months. It's also one of the biggest, the by far biggest tax providers to the city of Port Angeles, to the general fund. We anticipate, we estimate, or anticipate over $300,000 of immediate lost general fund revenue due to the curtailment from utility tax alone. And that will affect us in 2017. We also anticipate some secondary impacts due to the lost jobs, families that have lost their jobs, maybe affecting sales tax because their discretionary income is impacted. But also, those businesses that supply services to Napon, which a lot of our businesses provide services to Napon, they'll be impacted, which in turn can have a secondary impact on our revenue. So the good news is, and the reason I bring this up, five years ago, and all the hard work that was done between five years ago, when we were dealing with an $800,000 shortfall by prior to mid-year, and where we're at today. I can tell the council today, because of how we position ourselves and all the hard work that you did, and the collective work of staff, and there are a myriad, there's not one thing that you can put your finger on. But when you put it together with everything else that was done, all the policies, the priority setting process, everything that's happened, we will be able to adjust our budget. In 2017, we'll be bringing back, with a budget amendment, to deal with that shortfall of revenue without any layoffs, without any change in services, and we'll not even dip into reserves. Also, we'll be putting some money aside to deal with the secondary impact should they happen. The primary way we're going to be able to deal with that, and I think it's important everybody understands, is that there was a savings at the end of this last year. And sometimes, at the end of the year, we do have savings. In a perfect world, every year, you have savings at the end of the year. Because when you budget, if you're doing your budgeting right, you try to be a little bit liberal on your expenditures, and you try to be a little bit conservative on your revenue. So at the end of the year, you have a little bit of money left over. In other words, you don't go over budget. Well, everybody did a great job. Our savings was larger than it normally is, and we would normally use that for those one-time projects or capital facilities projects that we don't have money for. We would look at that, we'd bring projects back to the council. The Laurel Street Stairs are something that's a high priority for the community, and do those. But we have this emergency, and we'll be dealing with that, and also a little bit of belt tightening. But again, I just want the council to know that we're going to be able to weather the storm in a very responsible way and not even have to dip into reserves. And you should pat yourselves on the back because all the hard work really led up to how we can deal with the shortfall and weather that storm. And that's very good news. The next one is the city did receive the two, I wish Abby was here because she should get credit. She worked really hard. And everybody in the city, every employee, should get credit for this. We are going to receive a 2% reduction in our medical premiums for 2018 because we received the Well City Award. And in order to get that, it's performance-based. Employees have to do certain things, a certain percentage of employees, and they did do it. And so we get that 2% reduction in medical premiums for 2018. I did hear that they're going to, AWC is going to be increasing the requirements in the future to get that 2%. And we're up for that challenge. So, again, that's really good news. But the best news is, is that we're going to be able to really deal with that in a very responsible way. And again, good job, council. So with that, I have nothing further. I did also put in your packet an update on the finance director recruitment and selection process. And if you have any questions about any of that over the next couple weeks, you know how to find me.
Okay, that takes us to our second public comment period. Mike, can you do that? The only name I would have for the second public comment period is Mike Libera. Anybody else who would like to make a comment? I follow Mike. Three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me congratulate you and the council on your vote tonight to allow this petition on the ballot. Our Water, Our Choice Political Action Committee, the current petition sponsor, proposed a Port Angeles citizen initiative that would prohibit use of public water systems to medicate citizens. But rather than let the voters decide, the 2006 council spent city tax dollars on a four-year court battle which ended with the council retaining authority to use public water systems to medicate citizens. The current petition proposes changing Port Angeles from a code city to a general law city, which would give the city council less power and the citizens more power to be heard. We believe this is what the citizens want. But Our Water, Our Choice Political Action Committee does not want to waste more city tax dollars in another four-year court battle. We are in agreement with you. Instead, Our Water, Our Choice Political Action Committee will support candidates in the August 8, 2017 primary who will sign a pledge to, number one, support an ordinance to prevent additive medication, including fluoride, to the public water; two, support an ordinance that gives citizens more power to be heard with adequate time for public comment at all council and council committee meetings; and three, take actions to minimize city utility rates, including stopping fluoridation, which costs ratepayers $20,000 per year. Potential candidates who want Our Water, Our Choice Political Action Committee support should contact me, Mike Libera, And to respond to a couple comments made tonight during the council discussion, number one, our petition was not an effort to eliminate the council, but basically to get your attention. And Dr. Eloise Kalin, who has put out a tremendous effort to educate the public, is a medical doctor, who was a world-class research physician, and some of whose work is still found in the American Medical Association journals from some years ago, is still in use today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Is anyone else who would like to speak? Mike, what, your address is, what is your address?
I'm sorry, 316 Power Plant Road.
316 Power Plant Road.
Port Angeles. My apologies.
David, February 10, 14, Georgia. This statement is currently posted. I represent two Facebook groups, Code Choice PA and Fluoride Choice PA. Those separate groups, they are united by a single cause, correcting the wrongs of a misguided petition. We want to make it clear that we are an unfinanced grassroots group. We do not have a career political activist who has pushed anti-fluoride in Port Angeles for over 10 years. We do not have 750 hardcore supporters who have blindly signed a petition for someone who knew well and clear that the wording was misleading. Make no doubts. This individual is working to load this council and realize their own -- This individual is working to load this council and realize their own personal legacy of beating the big guys, ADA and AMA, all without any regard for us, the residents of Port Angeles. These bullying tactics and alternative facts stop here. They stop now. We, as a group, will work to accomplish three things. Defend our residents' right to learn the facts on these issues. Defend our residents' rights to make their own choice. And finally, defend and encourage our residents' rights to vote for that choice. All of us have heard tonight the ultimate legal definitions for this complicated petition. We will campaign to educate. Generally speaking, legal speak is gibberish to most people. So in simple terms, cities are made up of two things, class, first, second, code, and type, mayor council and manager council. When they made code city options, they gave an easy in and out in the event that a second class wanted code, or a code wanted to go back to second class. Nowhere in any form does it take a change of council to do this. Interesting fact, since this petition has started, the nine remaining second-class cities are now six. Chuala and Colville moved to code in 2016, and Colfax in 2017. Class change paperwork only. Even Port Orchard, the proudly fluoridated community, has held public comment where only three people spoke to the issue. It was brought forward on March 28, and with a positive public survey, was unanimously approved to adopt intention change to code, paperwork only. Our hope and request is that the individual responsible for bringing forward this petition and everything it entails will retract and request that the city council decline to place a reclassification vote on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please state your name and your address. Thank you very much.
My name is Lily Sherman-Lawren. I live at 306 West Third Street. And I put out a press release earlier today by one or two members here for the council and for staff and for members of the public, that I'm planning on running for city council for position three. I've been attending the council meetings in the last three months and also the work sessions and strategic planning. And the first one I went to in January, I had a sitting next to some people who said, "You sure you want to do that?" And, you know, at that time, I was like, "No, I'm not sure." But over time, and kind of seeing where the council is going, with its planning, with its vision for what we stand for as a community, I look forward to this opportunity, both to campaign and then also hopefully to work in the legislative process. So thank you for that. I also want to say Hugh Spitzer is a very well-regarded scholar on legal governance issues. In addition to co-authoring the Washington Constitution book with former Justice Utter, he wrote a recent paper called Home Rule versus Dillon's Rule for Washington Cities, which is a really good historical view on what home rule means and what Dillon's rule, which is really kind of very much like a second-class city, what that means. And I think it'll be a useful reference for people in understanding these different forms of government for Washington. Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. Any other questions? What's that? Oh, I see. Is there any Lady Williams?
I'm Jess Grayboll. I live at 1117 South Bevally Street. And first of all, I would like to thank you for, we need to do the town hall reunion project edition. I think that is going to be very well attended, and hopefully, we'll come up with some solutions. Excuse me. And respectfully, with regard to the petition that was discussed here this evening, I would like to make one comment. Until a court of law rules so, the petition should not be described as illegal. And I thank you.
Welcome in, ladies and gentlemen. Councilman Bill Wilson, of the West Fork Airport Engines. I'm pleased to report to you tonight that a decision has been rendered in the trial of one of the militant vigilantes. He has been found guilty of possession of a sawed-off shotgun. I don't know if he's been sentenced yet, but I am pleased to report that from my non-scientific survey of reports of assaults and harassment of the homeless and the other vulnerable people in our community has gone down dramatically since his arrest. And so I certainly want to thank Officer Whitney Barrett-Wings, and in fact, all of the Port Angeles Police Department that put this case together and did get this fellow convicted. Secondly, I want to thank the council tonight for finally hearing the people and putting this initiative on the ballot. I think that is the most sensible thing that you could have done, given the choices that the city manager gave you. And I do think that you now have seven months to sell this city back to the city residents. And I think that can be done, and I think it was a good start tonight, if that is your pleasure. Also, I want to put my glasses on, see if the third thing was that I got here. Oh, yeah, it's very likely that the city manager said that your revenue might have a $300,000 shortfall. I'm thinking that with the sale of the Napon plant out here for $20 million, that's going to put the city in for about $100,000 in brief taxes, so maybe that blow won't be too hard. So thank you for all you've done tonight.
Thank you, Dan. Any other? Okay, seeing the chair with the energy of motion, please. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting at 3:49. I'll move the table, please. Say aye.
Aye.